All right. Good evening, everybody. It is past seven o'clock on October 12, 2022. This meeting of the Hingham Select Board is called to order. The record will reflect that this meeting is being offered remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. I would know for the record that participated in tonight's meeting are myself, William Ramsey Chair, Liz Klein, Board Member, and Joe Fisher, Board Member. First item on the agenda is coyote awareness and safety. And we have with us Leslie Badger. Leslie, I so much very much appreciate you coming to speak to us this evening. You know, we've had a lot of coyote activity in Hingham this past couple of months, and particularly in the Liberty Pole area. Last week, there was some issues and I've received some concerns from residents. So Leslie, if you could just talk a little bit about coyote awareness and any advice you have for residents about how to deal with coyotes? And I know you do this a lot throughout Hingham and throughout the area, but any advice that you could have to educate people and any awareness tips would be great. So go ahead, Leslie. I'm going to turn it over to you.
Yes, absolutely. So I want to start with, I'll wait for the screen to come up. Great, thank you. And we can switch to the next page or the next slide, please. Thank you. So I want to start with a couple of facts about coyotes that I think are important for those that don't know a lot about coyotes, that they can be between 40 to 50 pounds. We do not have wolves in our area in Massachusetts that I know of, especially in the South Shore area. There is question that maybe coy wolves, but we're not 100% sure. The only ones that I've seen and confirmed with other wildlife experts have been 100% coyote. So they range between the 40 to 50 pounds. And that depends on their size, gender, season, because they're going to be bulking up like they are now going into the winter. In the summer, they're a little more lean and slender. A lot of people expect them to be just carnivores and primarily eating meat, but they actually do eat fruit and vegetables. And that is why one of the things I stress about compost piles, and I'll talk about that a little bit later on. Another thing that most people think is they're strictly nocturnal and they should never be out during the day. Because of times have changed so much, they've become an animal. Like most wildlife these days, they're out at all times. That is because they get flushed out of their areas quite a bit between recreational activities and conservation areas with all the building going on. So they're constantly on the move. So that's why they are no longer just a nocturnal animal. They are one that can be seen throughout the day, and that doesn't necessarily mean they are rabid or have distemper or anything that we should be concerned about. Usually, if that is the case, it is very evident that something is wrong with them. Next slide, please. So the next thing I wanted to talk about is the sightings that came in this year thus far. So between January and October presently, we had 38 sightings reported altogether. We still have them coming in regularly now, especially in the Liberty Pole area. So that number is going up a little bit. And as you can see in the last week alone, we had 15 reported sightings within those 38. And 23 of them were between January and September. So you can see the range of the sightings, how many. A lot of them are strictly sightings. People saw them cutting through their yards, running down the road. We have had thankfully no confirmed human attacks at this time in Hingham in 2022. Hopefully, it continues to stay that way. We can switch to the next slide, please. And I want to make sure that I explain as well about sightings, encounters, and attacks, because I know when I speak to a lot of people or we see on the news, a lot of people want to go straight to attack. And I want to make sure that we all understand the difference between them, because I think that's really important and it might help decrease some of that fear that we get when we hear about these situations. So sightings are the typical, if you see it running down the road in the distance, anything like that. Encounters are when the coyote actually crosses your path, continues on, stops, stares, looks at you, trying to figure out what you're doing when you're hazing it. And an attack is actually, but excuse me, I should say, and then encounter, no contact is made, no injuries happen, nothing along those lines. An attack is when contact is made or injuries are a result from that attack. That is when a defined attack happens. So that's why I wanted to make clear the difference between the sighting, encounter, and attack. So hopefully, that eliminates some of the fears when we talk about coyotes or describe our interactions with them. We know what actually we're seeing. So it may be a sighting versus an encounter or an encounter versus an attack. So we go on to the next slide, please. So this brings me to the situation that has been evolving in Liberty Pole. There's many people throughout Hingham that have said that they've seen coyotes. They've had them run through their yards. They've had them stop and look at them. But right now, Liberty Pole seems to be having more of a frequent sighting, more frequent sightings, and had two encounters with coyotes. There's a few others that had close sightings with them, but we had two reported incidences which involved an adult walking a small dog and a child walking a small dog. And in both cases, there was no contact made, no attack. So they were encounters versus an actual attack. Everyone did the right thing. They did an amazing job scaring it off, getting some extra help in there that helped scare them off and keep everyone safe, including the dogs. So that is the most important thing is always being alert of your areas. If you're in a situation where you feel that they could be coming at you to make yourself as loud as possible, as big as possible, scream, yell, because not only is that going to scare them off, but it'll bring the tensions of others, like other neighbors, like in this situation or other people, to help scare them off and have them go in an opposite direction if you feel you're not able to do it yourself. And that's what happened in this situation, thankfully. And everyone was okay with the incident with the small child. It was before school, early in the morning, and the child was walking with the dog before school. It was not going, it was not during the time of going to school or at school. So I wanted to make sure that was clear as well. Next slide, please. I should also add in too that the school has reported to me, I keep in contact with them regularly. I was even in the school with the resource officer and the principal going class to class. And we spoke with each class doing coyote safety with them, and they've also reported to me regularly they've had no incidences at South Elementary with any coyotes. The high school every so often has ones that come across the field. If I'm notified, I let the school know right away and the school lets me know and I'll check it out and make sure it's all clear. So physical education classes can happen and sports and all that. So we do make sure that school grounds are constantly checked as well. But thankfully, at South Elementary, there's not been any issues there as of yet. Hopefully, that will continue that way. The big question I get is why does this happen? As I said earlier, one of the big issues is the territory unfortunately for them is becoming smaller and smaller as we build our houses and we take up more and more of the land. And that unfortunately is making them see more and more. Also, we have, we have a situation where, as I said before, with the dogs involved in this, coyotes are going to be very interested in small dogs. And they're going to view them in two ways, whether it's prey or invading their territory. And it's important to stress that coyotes don't see dogs as anything but those two things. And dogs only can view coyotes as thinking they're another dog. So dogs are going to interact if they would think it's another dog. So that's why we have to always be aware and always monitoring the situation so that way we can make sure an actual contact doesn't happen and that we can scare off those coyotes, because they're both going to interact with each other how they normally would. A coyote would be thinking that it's another wild animal. And again, the dog would be thinking it's another dog. And that's always unfortunately, if they do make contact, is going to be a recipe for disaster because of that interaction. So that's why, again, I stress to always make sure either your dog is on leash, has really good recall, and that you're monitoring if they are outside on an invisible fence, someone is keeping an eye on them so that way that interaction doesn't result in a contact and then an attack unfortunately, which happens because they're both, again, that instinct and what happens. Again, another reason why this happens is because we have a lot more food sources on our own properties that are very easy for them to get. And we can go on to the next slide, because I'll talk about that a little bit later. So it is important, again, as I've stressed about hazing, when we see a coyote, the making ourselves as big as possible, yelling, screaming. We want to make sure that we discourage coyotes from wanting to come to our areas and make them as comfortable as possible. I get a lot of people saying that they stop and they stare at them. That's a result unfortunately, because they start to get used to running by humans and the humans are standing there looking at them or a quick yell at them and they will stop and look. It's natural for even humans to, when you hear someone yell to stop and look. So that is not an abnormal behavior. That is something that they are known to do, because they're looking to see what you're going to do next. And that's why I stress it's so important to continue that hazing. You can do anything from spraying a hose at them, honking a horn. There's great apps that have air horns. You can buy an air horn if you want. You can throw things at them. I've stressed the kids, all of us nowadays, we walk with water bottles. You can chuck that at them, anything that's going to scare them away and keep them moving is okay to do. And you want to repeat it until you know they're firmly out of sight and you can't see them anymore. And then wait a few minutes to see if they do come back around. If you're going to let your dog back outside on your property or the kids out to play, and if everything's quiet and there's no issues, you should be all set to go. But again, if you need to repeat that, you absolutely need to repeat that, because sometimes what you may not realize is they're cutting through your yard to get to another yard where there's a food source. So they may want to turn around and go back and try again at that food source. So that's why it's so important. And when you repeat that behavior of hazing them over and over, they will start to realize, okay, I don't want to come through this area. And that is why hazing is so important and it being repeated repeatedly. So we can move on to the next slide. So this leads me as to, as I said earlier, about food sources and how important it is to keep them secure. I never tell anyone, you can't have these things. You absolutely can. And I want everyone to enjoy all the things that make them happy and their yards and all that good stuff. But it is really important that I stress about the food sources that they're interested in and making sure they're secure. Because if they can get it easily, they're going to go to it versus having to go and try and hunt something down. So that's why it's important to make sure bird feeders are always regularly cleaned up underneath. Trash cans are secure. As I said earlier, they do eat fruits and vegetables. They'll eat eggshells. So that's why, again, composts are amazing. I'm all for it. I have one myself, but I make sure that I have it in a secure container so that way they can't get into them. Same with gardens. I have a garden myself and I make sure I have proper fencing around it. So that way, not only that I don't have coyotes coming in, but I don't have other wildlife getting in, because they will pick a vegetable right off the vine and eat it if they're hungry enough and looking for food. Again, with chicken coops and rabbit hutches, those are always important to pick up to make sure they're secure. If they're out and allowed to have free roam and because a lot of, I know a lot of chickens are allowed to roam around the yard and eat the grubs. That's great, but make sure they're being supervised. Because once a coyote comes in and realizes there's chickens or rabbits that are readily available, they will come back again and they will see and try and make an attempt. It's also important to pick up after your pets, especially in your yard. I do get a lot of reports where people will say to me, it's so weird. All of a sudden, this coyote, it came up the back stairs to my deck patio and it was looking in the sliding glass door window. This reason for this is because it's part of their hunting and scenting. And when I start explaining it, I usually get that aha moment. It's the dog is allowed out that back slider, the dog heads out or even a cat heads back out, heads out to where they go and do their business. And then they come back in. And then a little bit later, coyote's cutting through and smells that area and starts to scent. Because again, they don't distinguish between a domestic pet and a regular wild animal, and they will follow that scent. And usually, it leads right back up to that back door, back patio. And that is why I stress hose it down every so often and make sure you pick up regularly. And that will help decrease interactions like that as well. Next slide for me, please. So in conclusion, I want to stress to everyone that myself, especially in the Liberty Pole area right now and anyone else that reaches out, I try my best to patrol regularly for Liberty Pole. I'm also making sure I am at both when the kids go to school in the morning and when they get out in the afternoon, I try and make sure I make my rounds, make myself known. And so far, we've had a good result with that. Everyone has gotten to and from school safely with no issues. Environmental police is also doing sightings as well. We've been reaching out and speaking to people that have had concerns as well as environmental and fishing game. And then we've also have let people know that there is a hunting season. It does open on the 15th for anyone that was interested in that. There are licenses and pack agents that they can reach out to as well regarding the hunting season. So that is something if someone wants to look into, they can. So we are doing everything and more that we can to keep an eye on this situation and to make sure that we keep Hingham as safe as possible. And most importantly, educating on how to continue to live with them in a safe way and keep them out of our yards and away from our food sources. And especially so we can enjoy our yards and go for walks and hikes and all of that stuff, because that is very important to us. But it does take a team effort, as I let everyone know, when I go out to neighborhoods, making sure that we do the hazing and the securing of the food and always being aware of the environment that we are in.
Leslie, thank you very much. This is great as always. And every time I hear your presentation, I pick up a couple of things. And I think the important point about hazing and continual haze is an important one. And you know, one of the things I'm hearing a lot this year is, you know, why are they so comfortable around humans? But they seem more comfortable around humans, particularly Liberty Pole. And it's probably because what you said is the hazing isn't happening. They're just getting more comfortable in and out, in and out, you know, in and out through the yards and the driveways. And I think your point about, you know, carrying an air horn if you're out for a walk is a good one. And cleaning up after your pets, too, is an important thing to remember.
And I'll point out to folks, when they're taking a video and they'll show me the video of the coyote running through, I'll point out that when they're taking that video, they should actually be yelling and screaming. If they want to absolutely take a video, they should be yelling and screaming or throwing something at it, because just the act of standing there and taking a video out of the distance running by you is still teaching that coyote that it's okay to do that. Even if you see it in your house and you're looking out your window and you see it running by, bang on the window, open the door, slam it shut, anything to make it uncomfortable is going to help with the hazing. It's so important, the hazing, because any little bit they feel that being comfortable, unfortunately, it leads to situations like this. So that's why we really need to continue that hazing. I can't stress it enough.
Leslie, I just have two quick questions for you. One question is, you know, some years, we seem to have a lot of activity, like this year and other years, we don't have much at all. Last year, we didn't seem to have a lot of activity, but this fall, Liberty Pole is having sightings almost on a daily basis. Any reason for that?
That is usually because of where the food sources are, that they're going after and where they feel the most comfortable. They're always rotating and it's usually because they are going where the food sources are. So that's usually the number one reason why you may not see them in an area or things may be quiet for a while. And then they start to come back around, because they feel comfortable. This is an area that they may have been born in a year or two ago. And then they come back and check it out, and then they realize, okay, there's food sources. And we've let our guards down, thinking, okay, we haven't had any major issues. And then the food sources, you know, securing them become a little lax. And then they are able to get food sources here and there. And then all of a sudden, it becomes a more regular thing for them. And then we're in the situation that we're in and quicker than we realized, because they think, okay, I'm getting something easy and free here. I'm not going to go out to conservation area, which they don't distinguish between conservation and a neighborhood to look for a wild animal when I could easily cut through these neighborhoods and grab a quick food source. So that's why even if we have a quiet season, which is great, we still want to make sure our food sources are secure. And that should help cut down on these issues as well, too.
Thank you. I actually answered my second question and answering the first one. So let me turn to my colleague. So Joe, any questions for Leslie?
Well, first, Leslie, thank you. That was a great presentation. And your work in the town is much appreciated.
Thank you.
A question I've gotten is, is the town doing enough? Or are we seeing the coyotes because the town is not doing enough to control the population? So I don't know what the rules and regs are and what can we do, what can't we do? And can we do more? That's sort of a general question I'm getting from residents. Perhaps you can help answer.
So that is a great question. I've heard that as well. I think people are expecting that I'm going to sit out there and hunt and trap. I do not have, nor does any ACO license or the rights to trap or hunt. That is not in our job description, nor are we trained to do that. And it's the same thing as if there is a situation where you have coming on your property, another wild animal, and it's made a home under your shed or you have animals up in your eaves. That's when you call in a specific person who has the trapping or hunting license to come in and take out the animal. Our responsibility as an animal patrol officer and as a town is educating and making sure that people are doing what they need to do, hazing and securing their food sources and making sure children are supervised and small pets are supervised, especially if they are in an area that they know that there have been frequent coyote sightings. That's extremely important. And I wish I could be in every neighborhood 24/7, but I can't. And I don't know any ACO that is able to do that either. I've even on my own time, especially over this past weekend, made, they passed through Liberty Pole checking to see if there's any of them running through, you know, on my off time. So I try my best. Hingham has also offered, and I've continued to offer, going out and talking to neighborhoods and neighborhood groups on how they can work together. Hingham has also have the coyote sightings, and I try and reach out and educate people through that when they come in the best that I can. But again, I can't be in every single neighborhood and there's no ACO that I can be. You know, hazing and harassing coyotes and securing their food sources. That has to be the individual property owner that has to take in a neighborhood together, that has to take those precautions. I wish I could, but I can't. I have to do it in my own yard and make sure that it's safe. And you know, my own neighbors will come to me and I'll explain to them what to do as well. But it is our, it's just as much as our own responsibility to make sure that we secure those things in our yards and understand if you have those things, that it can bring in coyotes and other wildlife, because there's other wildlife that would be interested in some of those food sources as well. And I understand for those that may not have food sources in their yards, but they unfortunately become the cutthroat. So they'll see them, but they may not have them hanging around as much as someone that does have the food sources. So that's why that happens. So again, I think Hingham does go above and beyond the best that we can within everything that is required of us. And beyond that. Especially when you talk to other ACOS and they're like, what? You go out and put groups together and I'm like, I offer, I tell them if that's what they want, I will come out. And they're in awe that we have that and the sighting thing, the link that they can come into and report a sighting if they have one. So.
Well, many of us in town have seen the superhero movies where like there's the Flash who'll go around and can be everywhere at once, and we have high expectations. But no, you've been doing well, you know, above and beyond. So much appreciated. In your comments, you said that the hunting season's starting. You didn't draw the connection, but I want to be explicit. Am I correct that that means hunting of coyotes is allowed if you've got a license?
So yes, correct. So there are specific hunting seasons with different timeframes for various animals. Coyote hunting season starts October 15th. And that would require specific licensing and specific rules that go along with it. We also have to remember within 500 feet of a dwelling. And then there's other things that go on to it. You can go onto Mass Fishing Games website and read more into if that's someone, something that someone's interested in in depth, more about hunting season, the licensing, and how it will go about that process. And if that is too much for someone, then you can, they have on their website where you can go and look up for our area licensed pack agents, which is a problem animal control officer or in other terms, it is basically like a pest control service that will come out and will handle the situation. They'll assess your neighborhood, your area, and then they will let you know what they can do that is safe and within legal rights as well with the licensing and everything else.
Thank you. You've really done a great job. Appreciate it. That's it.
Thank you.
Liz, any questions to Leslie?
Yes, thank you, Leslie. You always go above and beyond and we appreciate it. You mentioned the Department of Fishing Game. Are they working with you or what role are they playing?
Yes, they are working with me as well. They have reached out to the parties that were involved in incidents in Liberty Pole and have spoken to them, have given names of agents that can come out and help with the trapping or hunting, depending on what would be best for that neighborhood and the circumstances or situation that is going on there. And a lot of other education as well, very similar to what I've said. They have expressed the same thing as well, so.
Okay, great. And do you want people to report every sighting and encounter?
They can, but I usually stress, because we're going to see coyotes, we're going to have sightings. And if they're at a distance and they're running and you've hazed them and done everything that you needed to, that is great. I don't necessarily need to know those ones. I'm more concerned about the level when it's encounter level. Obviously, attacks, but encounters or where you feel there could have been an attack that definitely could have happened, because in that way, we can determine and come out and see, do we have a situation that is evolving that could be going to attack level? Or is this considered where it may have been just a sighting? Or it was an encounter and, you know, what we need to do to adjust to handle the situation? I do also want to make clear on the fact of, as an ACO, I can put down a coyote and wild animals. I've put down coyotes and put down wild animals. That is in my job description. But the best way you can strive it is when they're sick or injured or it's the heat of the moment. Because again, I have to follow and legally as a town employee. I can't be going and just hunting down and trying to shoot an animal in a very dense neighborhood. That's just. that's not, it's a moving target. Um, so that's why we are allowed. So if it's in that heat of the moment, absolutely. Um, we will do what we need to do at at that point. That that is within what we are legally to do as an A C O, same with environmental police. And when the incident occurred with the child, we were out there and we were looking and we were prepared if this animal was sick or injured or anything like that, or we found it to be aggressive and and out of control, we would have put it down in that instant. Um, but hiking around and going through the woods and everything else, we were not able to find that animal. Um, so we did not have the opportunity to do that.
Understand. Thank you.
Welcome.
Does anyone else have any questions to Leslie? All right, seeing none. Leslie, thanks so much for coming tonight.
Um, anytime.
You are the best and we're so lucky to have you uh serving Hingham. Thank you very much, Leslie.
Absolutely. We all have a good night. Thank you.
You too. Take care.
Thank you. Bye bye.
Next item on the agenda is the appointment of police prosecutors and special police officers. We we have with us Deputy O'Shea. Ryan, how are you tonight?
Good evening, sir. Very well. How are you?
Good to see you. Just walk us through what do you want us to do this evening?
Uh, so just respectfully asking that we change the appointment date from uh, we generally appoint specials at the end of April. Um, and I'd like to move that to uh sometime in October. Uh, and the reason for that is um the training year through the M P T C, which is the municipal police training council ends on June thirtieth. So if we were to appoint a new special, a special that um hasn't worked with us before, it really only gives us two months to get them through all the training they need to do, which can include in-service, the range, first aid. Um, you know, another training. So um by doing in October, it really gives us the full training year and kind of um just takes the stress off the process. So um, there may be times where you, you know, we have someone in town that is a police officer in another town and retires and wants to be a special with us. And maybe, you know, we may appoint them at different times, but if we can appoint the the core group in October, we'd make um our lives and specifically my life, since I'm the one that oversees them a lot easier. So uh, we appreciate that if that could occur.
Um, thanks, Ryan. Uh, thanks, Deputy Deputy O'Shea. Just a a quick question. Um, you're asking us to appoint a couple individuals, a special police officers through October thirty-first and then two individuals through Ju- June thirtieth uh of twenty-three. What what's the, can you just clarify the um with the request there?
Sure. Those those two officers unfortunately won't um be able to continue because of post regulations. So we won't be able to certify them.
Oh.
So they they will expire in June.
Okay. And then the police prosecutors, we've been doing that for for years now. We certify them as um as specials. I think that was per the request of the presiding justice of the district court. Is that correct?
That's correct. Just to give them uh an extra layer of police powers in Hingham should something occur at the court and the uh the judge needs assistance.
Great. All right. I have nothing further. Let me see if uh Liz has any questions.
Yes, thank you, Deputy O'Shea. Just one question about the timing. If we change kind of the cycle and do um this appointment now, does it change their term or does it, does it have any negative impact on on the the actual term that they're serving?
Uh, no, it does not. It just um so uh this past April, they were appointed until next April. So this would just extend it to the following October and then we would just kind of start the cycle from there again. So uh, no, it shouldn't affect anything else, though.
Got it. Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
All right, Joe, any questions?
I just one question. Um, I'd I want to understand if there are any budget or fiscal implications of us making these appointments.
Uh, no, sir, number that that I can think of and um in a way, it's almost helpful because we're not rushing around to try to find a range or other training facilities. Um, so it it actually is probably more helpful because they, everyone can train together instead of having maybe a small group that that's to train on its own. So.
Exactly. Okay, great. Thank you.
Does anyone have any um questions or comments for Deputy O'Shea? Seeing now, I take a motion.
Bill, i- if I just have a point of order on the motion. I am wondering if we can style the motion to be vote to reappoint on the list attached here too, rather than reading every name.
So we've done that in the past and I was wondering if we could do that. Um, Tom, did you run that by Attorney Coughlin?
I did not ask him that question, but you're right. We've done it in the past and it's never been a problem.
All right, you know, I since I think we have some time with these.
Okay.
Since the dates are October thirty-first and twenty-three.
Hmm.
Joe, if you could, why don't you make the motion in that style, if you don't mind? And if there's an issue, we can always revote it next week. But we have done that in the past and I think we've done that with clearance from town council. So I I don't think it'd be a problem to do it tonight.
And I think, Bill, we did publish all the names on the agenda, so the public does know who the candidates are. There is a list that was posted.
See that. So I'll start by making a motion to reto- to reappoint the following individuals as special police officers for the town of Hingham through October thirty-one, twenty twenty-three, as shown on the list attached here too.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call vote, Joe.
Hi.
Liz.
Hi.
And I'm an eyes while the motion carries. I'll take a second motion.
Liz, I wouldn't do a list now. We only have two.
Do the do the list now? Okay.
No, I wouldn't. I would not.
Oh, don't do it.
For the second one.
All right. I'll make a motion to reappoint the following individuals as special police officers for the town of Hingham through June thirtieth twenty twenty-three, as shown on the list here too.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call, Liz.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
And I'm an eyes while the motion carries and I would take a third motion.
I move to appoint the following police prosecutors and backups as special police officers for the town of Hingham through October thirty-one, twenty twenty-three, as shown on the list attached here too.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call, Joe.
Hi.
Liz.
Hi.
And I'm an eyes while the motion carries. I would just ask Tom, but could you, could you just follow up with um John Coughlin while to make sure that that was done procedure correct and that we're there. Make sure those those officers are now um duly appointed. That'd be great.
Will do.
All right, Deputy O'Shea, always good to see you, Ryan.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
My best to your family.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is to sign the warrant for the state general election on November eighth twenty twenty-two, and we do have our town clerk with us this evening. Carol, good evening.
Good evening. Hello to all of you. So you have before you the warrant for the twenty twenty-two state election in November. This was prepared by the Secretary of State's office. Sent to us mostly filled in certainly for all the Commonwealth um votes uh positions. And the state ballot questions also provided by the Commonwealth. We've included and added to this our two ballot questions that are local and then the state has added two non-vinding questions at the end. We we do have a few um typos at the very end of it and I apologize for that. I was getting a little creative, unfortunately, with um a few names, but in any event, that's all editable and um can be remedied tomorrow morning. So we will um go ahead for a vote and we will be posting this in in outside in our office on the website and um also on our our traditional bulletin board as well.
Well, I would note the most important name on this is spelled incorrectly, which is my name.
I think, Bill, that
I will note that
That's okay.
It was also incorrectly missed.
I went across the board. I I think Bill was, I I always have this propensity to misspell your name and it goes back to our Hingham Education Foundation days and I have no idea why.
Yeah, I'm actually going to an event for them on Friday night.
That's awesome.
Awesome. Any questions for Carol? Joe?
Uh, I do, other than getting rid of the C in Fisher in my name. Um, so ju- just I know the answer to these questions. I just want to make it clear. Our vote does not suggest that this board is expressing any opinion on any item here. We're just authorizing its publication.
That is correct.
Okay. And then I note with respect to the items, the questions that the state posed, they give a summary and then they explain a yes vote and no vote. But for our questions, um, we could not do a an explanation of what a yes or no vote means.
That is correct. And I I did ask that question to the Secretary of the Commonwealth's Office and that is because they post their questions so far in advance. And they have, they request public comment and they have deadlines for that public comment. And our questions, of course, didn't come, we we had to meet in August first deadline to get our information on this state ballot. And of course, our language didn't come to fruition and we can't, we can't fall within the state's guidelines for posting in advance, um, asking for public comment. We would have had to have had these questions done months and months and months prior to when they were ready to go.
Got it. But I, just as a note for our future calendar, that we at least know what those target dates are and if we can get our questions done. I think uh some voters would find it helpful to have those.
Oh, I agree because we we get the questions all the time. What does this mean? I mean, I think that the follow-up question really is, is can we even piggyback on that state calendar? I'm not sure what the answer to that is.
Yeah.
I'm not sure they allow it.
Yeah. Thank you for putting this together. Appreciate it. No other questions.
Liz, any questions?
No other questions. Thank you, Carol.
Thank you, Liz.
All right. Does anyone else have any questions for Carol? Seeing now, I take a motion.
I'll make a motion to sign the warrant for the state general election on November eight, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call, Liz.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
And I'm an eyes while the motion carries. Carol, thanks for your help.
Thank you.
Take care. Have a good night.
You too.
And we'll get that signed tomorrow. We're all going to be there tomorrow night so we can sign it for you.
Right. And we'll take care of those changes in the morning.
Awesome. Thank you.
Great.
All right, next item on the agenda uh is appointments. I don't believe we have any appointments this evening, Joe.
Nope.
No.
No appointments. Okay. Next item, next item on the agenda as I agenda item six is public comment. Do not see anybody offering any public comment this evening. The last item is town administrator select board reports. Michelle, anything to offer tonight?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Tom.
I don't want to steal anyone else's thunder, but there is a public information session being held tomorrow night at seven o'clock. Um, please, and I very much encourage the public to come out and learn um about all of the issues that'll be facing the public at the special town meeting on November first. And that's at seven o'clock here at Town Hall in the auditorium.
Any questions for Tom, Joe or Liz?
Oh.
And?
Thanks, Tom. Uh, Joe, any uh reports tonight?
Just a quick uh thank you to the police department for their work on the Pink Pack, Pink Patch Project and their fundraising at the Wahlburgers uh yesterday uh afternoon and evening. Uh, the department's really out there uh supporting the cause. Uh, so much appreciated.
And Liz, anything this evening?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
And all of the I would report is I was unable to make the event this um this uh this morning, but uh the Veteran Service Department did, Department of Veteran Services did uh host the the annual Herbert, Herbert Alphass um ceremony this morning in the shipyard, which was, I heard was a very well-attended event. Uh, for those who don't know, uh Herbert Foss is one of two of Hingham's Medal of Honor recipients and it's an event that we celebrate every year in Hingham and uh very nicely done. So um my appreciation for uh the department for doing it, my appreciation for those who participate in the event as well. With that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
A move we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call, Joe.
Hi.
Liz.
Hi.
And I'm an eyes while the motion carries. We'll see hopefully a lot of people tomorrow night. Take care.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you.